This meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is now in session. This is our formal meeting format. I ask that everyone in attendance please silence their electronic devices and phones. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board, please. At this time, I'm asking everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will now proceed with our awards and recognitions. Mrs. Rye?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome, everyone. We have a multitude of impressive honorees this evening. To help us progress through the awards, we ask that you hold your applause until the end of each recognition. Additionally, as a courtesy to all our honorees, we also kindly ask that you remain seated until all recognitions are concluded. At that time, honorees and guests may exit quietly while the school board meeting continues. Since other people will be entering at the same time, please exit quietly and keep to one side of the hallway. Thank you for your help in honoring our outstanding students and staff. Now let's get started. Who thinks of building a solar-powered charging station on the back of an F-150 Power Wheels? Our first honorees did, and it earned them a state and national award for showcasing renewable energy. Please welcome Alex Allen, Nathan White, Austin Muniz, Nash Uman, Adam Gill, and their advisor, Engineering Department Chair and Robotics Technology Instructor, Dr. James Barger. Representing the Governor's STEM and Technology Academy at Lanstown High School, this team entered the Solar Express into the National Energy Education Development, aka NEED, Project Annual Youth Awards. It earned Lanstown the Virginia Senior School of the Year Award for the third consecutive year. Then, the Solar Express sped forward to Nationals where their project was recognized as the Outstanding Energy Engineering Design Award. Please join me in congratulating this ingenious forward-thinking team.
Okay, next, we have honorees from the girls' state soccer championship team from First Colonial High School. And this is especially fun for me because even though their coach, Coach Tucci, could not be here tonight, he coached my daughter Caitlin. And I know some of the girls on the team, and we've got a former school board member's daughter being honored, so lots of good, fun stuff going on. So I'm so happy to be able to announce this for First Colonial. So the first will list the team members, and some of them could not be here because, of course, they're competing in summer soccer. So Alison Karpovich, Chelsea Majica, Morgan Montgomery, Grace Bozeman, Chloe Bozeman, Isabel Bloondoll, Abby Zampi, Abby Urch, Anna DeLong, Nadia Farahashi, Lauren Crane, Abigail Wagner, Hannah Rosenfield, Adelias Vasquez, Yasmin Ellis, Lindsay Branch, Despina Titsis, Taylor Killian, Bella Kane, Isabel Fontana, Ryan Fall, Samantha Pharo, Assistant Coaches Abby Pauli and Pat Mugler. Head Coach, as I said, Joe Tucci is out of the country and unfortunately was not able to be here tonight. On the road to their championship, this team dominated Southampton Roads Girl Soccer with 17 consecutive victories before their one and only loss at Regionals. However, they avenged that loss at state semifinals and then went on to clinch the state title, the first time this has ever been done by a Hampton Roads team. In addition, Italians Vasquez, Isabel Bloondoll, Yasmin Ellis, and Reagan Tate earned four of the 16 All-State Soccer Team honors in Group Six. Isabel was also named Player of the Year, and Coach Tucci was Selected Coach of the Year. Congratulations to the 2018 Girl Soccer Champions from First Colonial High School.
Our next honorees are the 2018 Virginia Beach City Public Schools Future Teacher Award recipients. Let's meet the honorees. From Bayside High School, Aubrey Redifer and Savannah Sadler. From Cox High School, Sarah Boust, Kylie Hines, Robin Sanders, Madeline Arnt, Catherine Stouch. From First Colonial High School, Rachel Bibb, Oakley Van Meter, Jasmine Johnston. From Green Run High School, Dakota Hager, Audrey Remula. From Kellum High School, Caitlin Ashcraft, Nicole Finocchio, Rebecca Simpson, and Madison Sterns. From Kempsville High School, Riley Sekiris, Amara Gray. From Lanstown High School, Bailey Cox and Rebecca Moore. From Ocean Lakes High School, Madison Allen, Celine Chipman, and Alexis Nudson. From Princess Anne High School, Justin Thornton, Emily Best, Kingston Thorson, Megan Bader, Lauren Dietz, and Morgan Young. From Salem High School, Morgan Armiger and Tagan Robinson. From Tallwood High School, Ashlyn Hawkman, Caitlin Gertson, Katie Ribolt, Brianna Anderson, and Lauren Yee. And from the Technical and Career Education Center, Brianna Lamb. The School Division's Future Teacher Awards were instituted in 2008 to honor and reward outstanding students who have indicated their intent to pursue teaching as a career. Honorees are selected from amongst Virginia teacher for tomorrow or early childhood education students. And here's the best part: since the awards are administered by the School Division's Human Resources, tonight's honorees will receive a provisional contract to become a teacher in one of our schools upon completion of a degree in an approved teacher education program. Congratulations to our future teachers.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. Come back, y'all come back and teach, come back and teach.
Okay. Next, the School Board is proud to recognize Virginia Beach Education Foundation Board Members Dwayne Harper and Tony Peroni and their companies for receiving the 2018 Governors' Volunteerism and Community Service Awards. And I'll pause so they can actually get in here. There we go. The award honors Virginians who exemplify the spirit of service, foster skills of social responsibility, and demonstrate sustained commitment to meeting community needs. Harper's company, RRMM Architects, was named Outstanding Corporation for donating countless hours to consult with students during the planning of a donation school. That collaboration resulted in numerous STEM and sustainable school-building practices literally built into the school. Peroni and his company Quality Stone Concepts volunteer with the foundation to mentor students enrolled in construction courses at the School Division's Technical and Career Education Center. The School Board thanks you for your spirit of volunteerism and congratulates you on this notable award. We're very proud.
School Library Program of the Year. Next, we welcome Princess Anne High School Librarian/Media Specialist Jen Luffett and Courtney Porter, who helped their school earn the Distinction of 2018 School Library Program of the Year. This award is presented by the Virginia Association of School Librarians. A teacher at the school best describes their library in the following ways. At Princess Anne High School, the Library Media Center is a place where students and teachers alike want to spend their time, whether it's for reading, planning, socializing, or strategizing, or to partake in study bars, kindness rock activities, breakout sessions, or robotic coding. The Library Media Center enhanced the way our schools view learning, researching, and reading. Congratulations to Virginia School Library Program of the Year.
For our last recognition, the School Division Sustainability Officer, Tim Cole, is here in honor of the division, receiving the 2018 Governors' Award for Environmental Excellence. Since 2011, Virginia Beach City Public Schools has reduced its energy use by 27% while increasing building space by 9%. We are home to Virginia's first Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design (LEED) school. We have the Energy Star Certification Buildings in Hampton Roads, earned the 2018 Green Cleaning Award, and helped the state land a spot among America's top 10 in environmental design. As such, it comes as no surprise that Virginia Beach City Public Schools was the only K-12 School Division awarded the 2018 Governors' Award for Environmental Excellence, not for just instituting, but elevating sustainable building practices and operations in our schools. Congratulations, Mr. Cole, and thank you for your leadership in this incredible, ongoing work. Chairwoman Anderson and guests, that concludes our recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. It's my honor to share with you tonight's Compass Keeper feature as my Superintendent's Report. As you know, just two weeks ago, we were gathered in the Virginia Beach Convention Center, watching as our graduates finally got to put their hands on those well-earned diplomas. It's a crowning achievement that comes after 13 years of hard work and dedication, but it is not work that they do alone. They have dozens of teachers, administrators, and staff members working alongside them and helping them get to graduation. So tonight, we wanted to put the spotlight on one specific group of people who partner with our students in their journey to graduation and help guide them to the best path to success: our school counseling teams. You're going to hear from two of our high school counselors tonight, Bayside High School's Adrian Pearl and Salem High School's Alicia Zimba, about this important work. Let's watch this video.
I like to think that school counselors really do make a big difference in a lot of students' lives because we're that person that they can come to for consistency and some structure, and we don't give up on our kids. They know we're going to be there no matter what.
We've worked with them throughout the years, whether it's in lessons, whether it's individual meetings with students. I know as far as myself, I pull up their data just to see where they are, whether it's academics or attendance, and we just try to stay on them to make sure that, you know, they have the grades, they're not missing time, because that is critical. And if they are, then we're hitting them hard, setting up conferences with parents, contacting the parents, meeting with the students as well as the teachers, you know, to make sure that they are in a positive light and they're getting across that stage.
The important thing is to identify which students just might need a little extra from us, and we try to concentrate on them a little bit more to make sure that they are successful and graduate within the four years. And it could be academics, students who have struggled academically. It could be students who don't come to school regularly that we know we need to kind of work with and make sure that we help them in that. It could be students with family circumstances that affect how they're able to focus in class, and those students we meet with on a more personal, individual level.
So sometimes it can be a little scary for the students when they first enter with us as a freshman. We see all types of issues with our students from a counselor standpoint, working with them with graduation, attendance, academics, et cetera.
So if there's a student struggling academically, we work with that teacher, we work with the parents. We do parent-teacher conferences, we do student response team meetings. We actually, just our office alone, did 150 student response team meetings this year.
I know for some of them it's a struggle, and I know also that some of them are like, "Oh, could you just leave me alone?" However, when you step in high school or when you step in Bayside, you become our children.
I love when students graduate and then they call us afterwards and tell us what they're doing, like when they come back from college and they're like, "Miss Zimba, oh my gosh, they gave me my own office and they're paying me." And I'm like, "You're amazing, that's so cool," you know? And I just love that they want to tell us those things and that they still think about us in the years afterward, because I feel like that just, you know, goes to show that we did make a difference for them, and they're proud to come back and let us know.
I see them from ninth grade on to now, and that transition piece, and then some of my kids are crying, you know? And I know some of my crying kids are joyous, some of them had a hard journey ahead, you know, from ninth grade into now. So to see them walk across that stage, it means a lot. As I mentioned before, they are my babies, they are my children. And I think the parents feel that way, and they know once they get to meet their counselors that that is the case.
Well, we are very fortunate to have a stellar staff of professional school counselors K through 12, but here with us tonight, we are also fortunate to have Adrian Pearl and Bayside Assistant Principal Kenneth Vaughn with her, and Alicia Zimba and Salem Principal Matt Delaney. If you all could just stand up so we can give you a round of applause for your work, Well, I think we all sort of intuit that the work of our school counselors makes an impact on our students, but just to be sure, we made a couple of phone calls to learn a little bit more about these counselors here tonight, and they told us how vital they were to them both in school and in life. So Ms. Pearl, I want you to know that we spoke to Ossan Kiki, and she said point-blank that she did not think she could have survived the Health Sciences Academy without you. Specifically, she said you would sit down with her, you would talk to her about class options, and your first concern was that her selections were always right for her, not just what she thought she should be taking. And you cared about her whole experience at Bayside, and I want you to know, she added this: "She's been amazing. If I had something going on and I wanted to talk to her about it, she was always an open ear. Oh my goodness, I love this lady." Ms. Zimba, we also had the chance to talk to Kimberly Howard, and one of the things that she talked about was how in the beginning of high school, she was very introverted and had a hard time opening up, but that you were there to help her when she needed to learn to speak for herself. And she said she's always been there for me all along. Whenever I needed help or needed someone to talk to, she was always there, always welcoming. She did not only help me academically, she helped me improve my communication skills. She is really just the best. So again, I want to thank you two and all of our counselors across our elementary, middle, and high schools for all the work that you do in supporting our students and preparing them for success. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. That completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. At this time, the School Board will hear comments from the public to determine whether specific parcels in the proximity of Three Oaks Elementary School should be declared surplus and sold to the City of Virginia Beach for right-of-way temporary construction easement and permanent utility easement purposes associated with the Princess Anne Road Phase VII project, and proceeds of such sale will be retained by the School Board. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak on the public hearing?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up as speakers for the agenda?
Yes, ma'am, we have one.
Thank you.
That would be Stephen Johnston.
Good evening. In the past, it was commonplace for various dues to be withheld from paychecks. It was basically the only way for automatic transfers to happen in the 80s and 90s. It's now 2018, and electronic banking has come a long way. Now it is commonplace for an individual to set up a recurring transfer from their personal accounts to another account. I personally have several of these set up, wanted to pay bills, pay, transfer money between different accounts, and also transfer money to my son's college spending accounts. It's very simple to set up these, and every bank nowadays does it. The best part, it does involve a third party. Yes, in the 80s, this would have been impossible to do, but today, it is possible to do it. Currently, the Virginia Beach Public Schools allow for payroll withholdings to pay association dues. The cost for these services for employees may be hard to determine, but there are some costs involved. These costs involve setting up the withholding, the cost of accounting and audits for the payroll, and the cost to correct any errors when too much or too little is withheld. Virginia Beach does not need to be in the middle of these transactions. They are between the association and its members, and with the current electronic banking system, there's no need for Virginia Beach Public Schools to be involved in these transactions anymore. Virginia Beach Public Schools motto is "Charting the Course." Well, maybe you should chart the course into the 21st century banking and allow these transactions to become between the employees and the association and not involve Virginia Beach Public Schools. All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, those are all the speakers that have signed up on the hearing on agenda items.
Thank you. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve our minutes from the June 11th meeting. The motion is made by Mrs. Rye, seconded by Mrs. Riggs. The voting board is open. The minutes from the June 11th meeting have been approved. It is noted that Mrs. McLeod abstained due to her absence on June 11th. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening. The motion is made by Mrs. Holtz, seconded by Mrs. McLeod. The voting board is open. The agenda has been adopted. The consent agenda this evening has four items listed under School Board Organizational Matters. First one being the Superintendent's Designee in the absence of the Superintendent. Second one is the Superintendent's Signature Authority. The third one is the Payroll Deductions. And fourth is School Board Assignments to Committees. Also, under B in the consent agenda, Item B under the consent agenda has four Policy Review Committee Recommendations. Policy 4-17, the suspension from work of teachers or classified employees. Policy 5-3, formulation of student rules and regulations. Policy 5-11, age of compulsory attendance and exemptions. And Policy 5-12, legal withdrawal. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Mrs. Riggs has made the motion, Mrs. Melnick has seconded. The voting board is open. The Consent Agenda has been approved. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Motion is made by Mrs. Melnick, seconded by Mrs. Riggs. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open. The Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments have been approved. Dr. Spence, would you like to introduce any new administrators?
I certainly would. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We do have a number of appointments this evening. Let me begin by asking Brittany Church to please stand up. Ms. Church has been a teacher at Coleman Place Elementary School and Norfolk Public Schools, and I am pleased that this evening you have recommended, you have approved our recommendation for her to serve as the next Assistant Principal at Parkway Elementary School. I believe you brought some guests with you. Would you like to introduce them? I saw a few coming in behind you.
My mother, Lisa Church. My mentor, Dr. Reba Jacob Miller. My father, James Church. My sister, Ashley Church. My daughter, Rose Church. I have my cousin, Leslie Church. My grandmother, my aunt, Gracie Hendrix. And my aunt, Cheryl Russell. And my cousin, Renate.
Thank you all for being here. If I could ask Sean Crich to please stand up. You all will recognize Sean, he's taught in Vermont and also in Norfolk Public Schools. He's been a teacher here in Virginia Beach at Green Run Elementary, as well as an ITS at Great Neck Middle School. Most recently, been serving as Administrative Assistant at Birdneck Elementary School. And this evening, I'm pleased that you've approved our recommendation for him to serve as the next Assistant Principal at Centerville Elementary School. Sean, I believe you have a guest.
I do. My wife, Jamie, Jamie Crich.
Thank you very much for being here. If I could ask Tammy Moore to please stand up. If she's here. Tammy has served as a Center Director for Childtime Learning Center, and also, most recently, as a teacher at Glenwood Elementary School and Program Compliance Specialist at Glenwood Elementary School. And I'm pleased that this evening you have approved our recommendation for her to serve as Assistant Principal at Indian Lakes Elementary School. And I believe you have guests.
I do. I have my dad, Bellis James. My son, Caleb Moore. My mom, Karen James. My son, Colby Moore. And my son, Kylie Moore.
Thank you all for being here. If I could ask Laurel Crenshaw to please stand up. He's got to hand off to the little fella. Laurel has served as a teacher on the Peninsula at Hampton and Newport News, as well as in Chicago. He's served as an Assistant Principal and, most recently, Principal at Northampton Middle School in Northampton County. And I'm pleased this evening that you've recommended, excuse me, you've approved our recommendation for him to serve as next Assistant Principal at Independence Middle School. And would you please introduce your guests? If I could ask Jessica Windish to please stand up. You all will recognize undoubtedly Jessica, who has served with distinction as a teacher at Ocean Lakes High School, and most recently, as a teacher at Tallwood High School in the Global Studies and World Languages Academy. And this evening, I'm pleased you've approved our recommendation for her to serve as the next Coordinator of the Global Studies and World Languages Academy at Tallwood High School. And would you like to introduce your guests?
I would. There are guests here also. This is my husband, Chris Windish. And our youngest son, Robert Windish. Our oldest son is just wrapping up football practice. My father, Dave Walker. My mother, Barbara Walker. My sister, Jennifer Smith. Heidi Backer, Al Carter, Dr. Brown, at Tallwood High School. And Miss Moore, who has just announced, we are childhood friends and our children play football together.
If I could ask Amber Huffman to please stand up. Amber has served as a teacher in Suffolk Public Schools, as a teacher in Florida... Amber has served as a teacher in Suffolk Public Schools, as a teacher in Florida, and Newport News, and most recently, as a Special Education Instructional Coach in Hampton City Schools. And this evening, I'm pleased you've approved our recommendation for her to serve as Coordinator of Special Education in the Department of Teaching and Learning. Congratulations. And you have guests?
I have Drew. My aunt, Shaila. My uncle, Phil.
I'd also like to ask Lisa Myers to please stand up. Lisa has served as a teacher in Norfolk Public Schools, also here in Virginia Beach, at Pembroke Meadows Elementary, Hermanage Elementary. She's worked in Chesapeake as a Director of Instructional Testing, and most recently, has worked in Virginia Beach as an Instructional Specialist in the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. And this evening, I'm pleased that you've approved our recommendation for her to serve as another Coordinator of Special Education in the Department of Teaching and Learning. Congratulations. I believe you also have guests.
I do. This is my son, Thomas. My husband, Ken. And my daughter, Frances.
That's fantastic. Well, I'm not quite done, but I do want to say to those guests who are here how much we appreciate you being here, the support that you provide for these administrators makes their job immeasurably easier, and it's a difficult job, and so we very much appreciate that. It's a family affair. And the rest of you, take note, Ms. Church, she brought the whole family, so. I do have a couple of other things that I do want to bring to the board's attention. Not able to attend tonight, but we do want to go ahead and take, you have taken official action on this this evening. You have approved the next Chief Operations Officer in the Department of School Division Services. You have approved this evening Captain John Jack Freeman, who is the commanding officer at Naval Support Activity Hampton Roads. His extensive and distinguished career in the Navy, which includes things such as being a Top Gun instructor, as well as Lieutenant Commander in the U.S. Naval War College, and on and on, have provided him with extensive preparation to work across operations to include food services, transportation, school security and safety, and plant maintenance operations, and we're very pleased to welcome him aboard. He's currently on active duty, and so he is not able to be here this evening. And we will have a TBD date for you in terms of his start time. In the interim, I do want to point out that David Pace will serve as the Acting Chief Operations Officer until he's able to come aboard. Also, we have made note of this elsewhere, but I think it's important in this setting to make note of this. We do have two other Chief Officers who are stepping down from the senior leadership of the division. I'd like to just recognize in this setting Dr. Amy Cashwell for her service to Virginia Beach, 21 years, I believe you said, tonight, and most recently, as the Chief Academic Officer of the division, and also Eileen Cox for her service as the Chief Media and Communications Officer in Virginia Beach, both of whom are going on to outstanding opportunities and spreading their wings and taking everything that they have learned and done here in Virginia Beach, and working to improve other divisions to help them come along and become maybe almost as good as we are. If we could just give them a round of applause. I do want to quickly note, for continuity's sake, I will be naming Dr. Leslie Hughes as the interim Chief Academic Officer. Leslie currently serves as the Executive Director for Elementary Curriculum. Also want to note that I'll be naming Lauren Nolasco as the interim Chief Communications Officer for the division until we're able to fill that spot as well. And just finally, also a word of thanks, Dr. Valika Gatling, who has been serving as our Executive Director at OPEC, as you all know, is resigning and moving on to a position as a professor at Old Dominion University in education, and congratulations to you as well, Valika. And I am done.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agreement of sale for conveyance of property from Three Oaks Elementary School property for the Princess Anne Rose Phase 7. The motion is made by Mrs. McLeod, seconded by Mrs. Manning. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open. The motion has passed. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the Community Advisory Committee Appointments. The motion is made by Mrs. Manning, seconded by Mr. McDonald. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Manning?
I would just like to say thank you so much to all of those community volunteers who served to advise the school board. I know you're very busy folks, and we really, really appreciate you taking the time to do this.
Thank you. And I would like to ask if any of you are in the room, I would love you to stand so that we can recognize you. Beth Dear is recommended to fill the vacancy in the Landstown High School Zone. Is she here? Gerald Phillips is recommended to fill the vacancy for Callum High School Zone. Jennifer Roswinski is recommended to serve at large. And those are for the Gifted Education vacancies. And then in Special Education, we have Leanna Landry, Cheryl Ward, Dawn Candia, Ainsley Proctor, Jill Reed, Tina Santi, Cheryl Smith, Pamela Tanner, and Sandra Herman, Dorothy McGuire, Donna Robel, and Frances Thompson. We thank you each for serving on these committees. Thank you very much. Seeing no other discussion, the voting board is open. Whoops. It is now.
Madam Chair, did you want to announce the General Advisory Council's appointee?
Did I miss that one? Yes, I do. I have that person is Elaine Britt? Oh. I couldn't see it. Thank you. So those appointments have been approved. The first item on information this evening is the Citizens Advisory Committee Reports. First, we'll hear from the Gifted Education Committee.
Chairman Anderson, Vice Chairman McDonald, members of the school board, Dr. Spence. My name is Sandy Bealberry, your elected Chair for the Community Advisory Committee for Gifted Education. The CAC is charged with reviewing the five-year local plan for gifted education, and then presenting to the school board and the superintendent an update on the activities addressed in the plan, and making recommendations the committee feels would be in the best interest for the students identified for gifted services. We are here this evening to provide a brief overview of our findings and recommendations. The full report has been made available to you in your board member packet. I am joined this evening by members of the CAC and gifted program staff. At this time, I'd like to ask them to stand and be recognized. First, committee members. And gifted program staff. The current five-year local plan for gifted education 2015-2020 includes five areas. Identification, delivery of services, curriculum development, professional development, equitable representation of students, and parent and community involvement. Throughout the school year, the CAC meets each month except in December, and works with the Office of Gifted Programs in the Department of Teaching and Learning to understand and remain current in goals, activities, and outcomes associated with the local plan. From our review of the current local plan 2015-2020, we are pleased to report that our goals, activities, and outcomes for the 2018-dated areas of the local plan have been completed or underway. In areas where the work is ongoing, these activities will be monitored by the CAC moving forward. There is one item of note under the topic of delivery of services that deserves extra attention and reinforcement on the belief in the work that we have done in the gifted education in Virginia Beach Public Schools. Gifted Programs is cited as a case study in August of 2017 Hanover Research Report, serving gifted students in the general education classroom, where Hanover Research reviews program models and instruction strategies to support gifted students in general education classrooms. The findings in this report derive from the review of the secondary research literature on gifted education models, as well as in-depth interviews and administrator responsibilities for gifted programming at five school districts identified as exemplar for best practices in gifted education in the secondary literature. We are extremely grateful for this recognition and the hard work that has been made to make it possible. We'd also like to highlight the work under the topic of professional development that has been done to address the importance of making connections across school levels and assisting the students' transitions. Over the past three years, gifted resource teachers have been grouped together in feeder school patterns in order to make this a priority and focus on their work. This grouping has increased the ability to communicate, collaborate, and work in the K-12 vertical teams on an inquiry question that will impact the school and community they serve. It has been an innovative way to address the issues and differentiate and personalize the professional learning of the GRTs. Another area of the five-year plan under professional development and parent and community involvement that has integrated services is the inclusion of students and parents as collaborators and partners in the decision-making. In November, we had the Parent Workshop Gifted, a parent conference for social and emotional needs, included parents and students as presenters and true partners in gifted education. In addition, students participated in panelists for the Parent Advisory Committee Joint Region Two Meeting hosted by Virginia Beach in October. We see increased student participation as a positive trend and expect it to continue and expand. In addition to reviewing and monitoring the local plan, the CAC members conducted site visits, met with parents, teachers, and administrators, answered questions from residents interested in the gifted program on a regular basis, and at special events such as the Navigating the Journey event, and worked closely with gifted program staff. This year, the committee held meetings at school sites across the division in order to learn about other programs in place and to explore the multiple pathways for gifted students. We met at the Renaissance Academy, the International Baccalaureate Middle School Program at Plaza Middle School, Old Donation School, and the Math and Science Academy at Ocean Lakes High School. Most visits included an overall of the program by the school staff with a brief tour of the facilities. Time and questions and answers were provided, and each visit was very informative. As mentioned, the Joint Regional Meeting for Gifted Directors and their parent advisory groups was held in October. A highlight of the meeting was the Regional Student Panel. The students discussed the importance of gifted programming and its impact on their educational careers. Roundtable groups discussed topics of interest and advocacy efforts in place across the region. Other regional committee members expressed great interest in how our committee works and our schedules of site visits to inform the recommendations to the school board. As a result of this success of this experience, regional directors and committee representatives requested a yearly meeting of this type. Based on the committee discussions later last year, we amended our bylaws to include a school counselor as an ex-official member. Mr. Robert Jamison, Coordinator Guidance Services, and Mr. Robert Torren, Guidance Counselor at Salem High School are currently sharing this responsibility. This change has already had a positive impact on our committee. At the September meeting, Mr. Jamison presented an overview of the Guidance Services, which provided to be very helpful. We applaud the efforts of the Guidance Services and gifted programs to establish a firm foundation this year through reciprocal professional learning opportunities for gifted resource teachers and school counselors. The activities mentioned and many others are highlighted in the reports which you received. Tonight's presentation to the board includes the focus on the recommendations we determined would be the most beneficial for our program as a whole, and most importantly, to all of our gifted students in our division. We look forward to monitoring and advocating for these areas of focus. Before we review the recommendations, I would like to introduce you to our student representative of the CAC, Ms. Haley Cohoon from Green Run High School. We would like to share her experiences with the board.
Over the last two years, I took my role very seriously, as it was to represent gifted students and the programs offered. I've spent relatively my whole life waiting in these waters, whether directly in the gifted schools, Old Donation Center, and Kemp's Landing Magnet School at the time, or continuing my education in the gifted resource cluster at my home school, Green Run High School. This means I've experienced both the good and the great sides. This role on the CAC, in my eyes, was my chance to help make the good better and enhance the great to become extraordinary, to give back all the efforts put in for me and the rest of the gifted students and the upcoming ones. Our most important question never changed, and that was, how can we best reach and advocate for all gifted students and the gifted resource teachers that have graciously and selflessly dedicated such great lengths of their time? The admirable work ethic and determination of each CAC member taught me a lot, allowed me to see the background of the gifted program, and built a greater appreciation for the gifted program. My experience as a student representative is one I'll surely cherish. Ms. Bealberry will now present the committee's recommendations to the board.
Thank you, Haley, for your insightful comments. We know that the school board appreciates the student voice, and we are certainly to have come to depend upon you for your perspective. And so, we wish you great success in college and beyond. You will be missed. We will sorely and we sincerely appreciate you serving on this committee. Before I present the recommendations to the board, please allow me to applaud your unwavering recognition for the need of quality gifted education, which we are proud to say that Virginia Beach City Public Schools has at all levels and in all buildings. Virginia Beach City Public School truly is charting the course. As a result of our thorough review of activities outlined in your local plan, monthly meetings and presentations on topics associated with gifted education, and our numerous site visits to see the program in action, the Community Advisory Committee for Gifted Education respectfully submits the following recommendations to the school board of the City of Virginia Beach. Support building administrators as they implement ways to provide and protect planning time for the collaboration work of the GRTs and the gifted clusters at all levels as outlined in the annual August Principals Packet Memo regarding gifted programs. Facilities opportunities for communications between gifted staff, school counselors, and case managers to ensure the academic and social and emotional needs case managers to ensure the academic and social and emotional needs of gifted learners are met. Expand professional learning for gifted resource teachers, gifted cluster teachers, other instructional staff, school counselors, and administrators to ensure quality gifted instruction and to include student and parent involvement. Allocate additional temporary employment agreement, TEA, staff to support the unique needs of schools with Spanish immersion program. Allocate a TEA position for the development and implementation of a gifted model at the Renaissance Academy to support gifted services, including student transitions, in this alternative Expand and support the Emerging Scholars Initiative, ESI, program to achieve an increase in the number and quality of gifted referrals among students. Continue to advocate for the implementation and refinement of a cluster, resource cluster model at the high school level to include an emphasis on clustering in grades nine and 10. Communications with parents and students, and collaborate efforts between all stakeholders in order to address the unique needs of high school gifted students. In closing, we believe Virginia Beach City Public Schools has one of the strongest gifted programs in the nation. Hanover Research certainly agrees. We want to thank the school board for its continuing support and contributions for the qualities of the educational services that Virginia Beach City Schools offers our children of gifted and the talented program. At this time, we're prepared to respond to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Mrs. Rye.
Just more a comment tonight, just reading this report, as previous reports, I think the innovation comes to mind, and there's so many examples of it time and time again. And I think what has moved this department forward in the last decade is almost like, in some ways, a century's worth of innovation. I mean, we're a model in so many ways, and, you know, the holistic identification of kids now, and the early scholar initiatives that continue to intrigue me, and the dual exceptional student that I've become better educated about in the past few years. I could go on and on. So, you know, thank you to you and your fellow volunteer colleagues. And I also want to acknowledge our retiring gifted coordinator, Barbara Kennedy, my son's former social studies teacher, and she's been at the helm along with Dr. Gatling for, well, Ms. Kennedy for the last 10 years, and Dr. Kennedy, and Dr. Gatling, of course, stepped in somewhere along the way. So, just, it's been a true team effort.
Mrs. Manning.
Thank you so much for your hard work. One of the recommendations here that stood out to me is allocate a position for the development and implementation of a gifted model at Renaissance. Do we have any gifted services right now at Renaissance?
I don't believe so. It fluctuates.
Of course, after you make me tear up from that. Thank you. Thank you very much. The numbers, of course, there fluctuate based on what students are there or not at any given time. What we have found over the years is that we have been able to go over there and do some staff development for some general teachers that are working with the students, but we do not have a dedicated person there. The committee has been asking for that for quite a while, and this year's report changed that from asking for a .5 to a TEA, which we feel might be more attainable, and then we can work, you know, with that person to begin some of the really difficult, challenging work that's there with those gifted kids.
Thank you. I'd really like to support that. Thank you.
Mrs. McLeod.
Thank you, Chairman. I wholeheartedly agree. I've always said we need to teach every child as if they were gifted, and those students, there's a lot of difference it can make there, whether they're labeled gifted or not. So, I'm behind it completely, Barbara.
Okay, so, no further questions or discussion? Thank you very much. It was a very thorough report. Next, we'll hear from the Special Education Committee.
Chairman Anderson, Vice Chairman McDonald, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. My name is Sandy Herman, and I am the current Chair of the Special Education Advisory Committee, known as the CAC. By state regulation, the CAC is charged with advising the school board about current issues that impact students with disabilities and their education in Virginia Beach. We are here this evening to provide a brief overview of our work this year, as well as recommendations and acknowledgements. I am joined this evening by members of the CAC at this time, and I would like them to stand and be recognized. Okay, I'm getting with technology now. It's not changing, sorry. As a reminder, the Virginia Beach Public Schools Special Education Advisory Committee is a local advisory committee, and it's LAC by regulation, that the state of Virginia requires for each school division. It advises the Virginia Beach School Board, the superintendent, the school administration, and the community regarding matters related to the education of students with disabilities. The committee functions through the collaboration and volunteer efforts of parents, school division personnel, and other community representatives. All CAC meetings are advertised in advance, open to the public, with an established area at the beginning of each meeting for public comment. If citizens are unable to make comment at that time by themselves, they can email, fax, or mail their public comment to other committee members who will read them on their behalf. The role and function of the CAC is outlined in the regulations governing special education programs for children with disabilities in Virginia, and include these three bulleted points, as well as the next three bulleted points you'll see. I also have a copy here that comes specifically out of the regulations that would identify what the roles and responsibilities of the CAC are, along with meetings, membership, all that good kind of stuff, because it is in regulation. Here are the three other roles by regulation that the committee is assigned with doing. Accomplishment and activities. This year, we have collaborated with staff from OPEC on many initiatives. I'd like to highlight the work that has been completed as a result of the formation of a literacy committee. The literacy committee is composed of instructional specialists from OPEC who work with a specialist in the Office of Elementary Education to ensure that the needs of struggling readers are met. Members of the CAC provided feedback on literacy guidance document that was created to build the capacity of staff working with students with disabilities. We are looking forward to collaborating on a guide for parents as well. As required by the Virginia Department of Education in the regulations governing special education, we reviewed the annual plan prior to the submission to the school board, and if you remember, we came before you and suggested that that be approved, which it was. Updates, recommendations, and revisions to the disability history and awareness month activities for the schools were also provided, which actually is in October. In addition to our collaborative efforts, we have sent a CAC member to attend meetings to the School Board Policy Review Committee. The Community Resource Fair, sponsored by CAC and OPEC, is annually in November. This event is planned, set up, and coordinated mainly by the dedicated CAC members intent on providing the community with this knowledge. This year, we had over 75 agencies and organizations that provided information about the services and products for people with disabilities there. Throughout the years, CAC members have been asked to serve on a variety of division-wide committees. This year is no different. We have had a committee member serving on division committees to create future learning models in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. As a committee, it is important that we stay as current about special education laws and advocacy. We are fortunate that the Virginia Department of Education makes trainings available for CAC members to attend, and as you can see, we have had a variety of our CAC members that have attended a variety of trainings that have been sponsored throughout the division, many of them not local at all. Presentations. In addition to participating in trainings, we've also provided, we've also provided trainings at some of our CAC meetings. You can see the variety of topics that were covered at our meetings. At this time, I'd like to provide you with the recommendations from the committee. Regarding the plans to increase the ratings in Special Education Performance Indicator Report, that was part of your board packet today, we would like to ensure that there is a committed or continued focus on improving all outcomes. Many action items to improve the indicators are part of the five-year plan. And up here, you have a full copy of the report, along with knowing what the five-year plan would be. We are grateful for the emphasis and awareness that has been given to the topic of dyslexia, as long, as well as other actions to address the needs of students identified with dyslexia. We have included some additional recommendations in the written report you received and look forward to continued dialogue throughout the implementation of the five-year plan. And the report that was actually online, you will see additional recommendations that Here, you will see additional recommendations for your consideration. These recommendations have the power to positively impact the educational opportunities and outcomes for Virginia Beach students with disabilities. We are pleased that the Virginia Department of Education has adopted additional guidance regarding restrained seclusion. At a CAC meeting earlier this year, Mrs. Lynetti informed us that the school board policies will be updated to include this when they are fully approved. We look forward to partnering with you in this endeavor. We look forward to continued dialogue with the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children and the Virginia Beach School System staff on how these other recommendations can be We also recommend that a seat on the committee be identified, a seat on the Policy Review Committee be identified for a CAC member, since one of the responsibilities is to review the recommendations. Currently, we have him observing the meeting. We would like to have him participate and offer guidance. CAC would like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Gatling, OPEC, and the Virginia Beach School System staff for the assistance offered to CAC as we work to carry out our mission. We would also like to recognize the commitment of the Virginia Beach School System, the Virginia Beach School Board, and on improving the education of students with disabilities. The commitment to the future of students with disabilities enriches not only their lives, but the lives of all students, as well as our committee. If you will notice, I have handed a copy of the report that was submitted to you all online. I've also supplied a copy of the audit. We went through and did a review of the audit. Those were, obviously, in November, and you have one other thing that I can't remember right this minute. Oh, a copy. You have a copy of the PowerPoint, because the one that is actually in your packet is incorrect. So, you have an updated version. Now, I will entertain questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions, comments? Mrs. Rye.
Hi. Thank you for all the effort I wanted to your report, and I think this advised your committee more than other, really, members come with a lot of heart, and we're here to work together as a team. One of the recommendations I feel kind of obligated to address this evening, the Policy Review Committee. So, you know, citizen committees are not members of school board committees, but rather serve in an advisory capacity, and as related subjects arise, we do seek appropriate input through staff and the relevant committees. And I think, as you're aware, we worked very hard this year to establish a process with your committee in particular to keep you, I mean, obviously, our policy review committee schedule is posted publicly for everybody, but we make a point monthly of letting your committee representative know when the meeting is and when policies that are connected with special education come up for review. We have established the policy of presenting those policies through staff to your committee for input. So, it's a process we've established that we've worked hard at, and, you know, at this point, it seems to be working successfully, and I'm happy outside of this meeting to talk further with you about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Weems.
Thank you, and I just wanted to comment. Thank you so much for what you do, Sandy, and you ladies and gentlemen in the back. I have enjoyed going to so many of your meetings and listening, and I know that you do come to the table with so much passion, and just please continue advising us, email us with regard to the policy committee. You know, you can email Ms. Rye and copy all of us about your suggestions, because you really are here to advise us, and I would like to hear from you more than, you know, a couple times a year, the same with the gifted program. You know, we would love to hear from y'all, you know, more often so that we can know, you know, what's going out there, because y'all are, y'all are right there in the forefront. So, I appreciate all your work, and Ms. Holtz has been assigned as the liaison, so hopefully she will be attending your meetings from now on, but I won't be a stranger. I'll pop in every now and then, and, but I just want to thank you for your work, and please just keep talking with us and advising us of what you see. A quick question about what you have for us. So, have we gotten that before, or, in November?
I don't know if you got it in November. You have a copy now. The report, the audit, and the, the special education performance indicators were all supplied and emailed directly, so I'm not sure if you received those or not.
Okay, well, I will definitely read those and find me questions. I know where to go. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next... Our next information item is the interim financial statement. Welcome, Mrs. Pate.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chairman McDonald, School Board members, Dr. Spence. As of May 31st, we continue to show an acceptable trend in overall revenue, as illustrated in this first graph. Our actual March 31st ADM did come in slightly higher than our budgeted ADM, resulting in a small surplus in projected state revenue of approximately $97,000. Federal revenues continue to show an acceptable trend at this time. Previously, in a board meeting, we did mention that we would not expect to see any more impact aid payments before the close of the fiscal year. However, in June, we have received approximately $1.4 million in Medicaid reimbursements. So while we anticipate to end the year with a slightly unfavorable trend for this revenue category, we are expecting to collect almost 99% of the budgeted revenue in this category. Sales tax receipts continue to remain acceptable, as illustrated in this next graph. Year-to-date through May, we are approximately $860,000 higher than last year. For June, we are seeing an increase of approximately $78,000 higher than June of last year. Based on the latest projection of state sales tax, we are expecting higher-than-projected receipts for the year. And obviously, those last payments that we're going to receive as we close out the end of the year are based on the actual state receipts that the state receives. So but we do expect it to be higher than what we budgeted. Last graph reflects the expenditures and encumbrances trend, and again, that remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last information item is the Legal Services Cooperative Agreement for Fiscal Year 19.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chairman McDonald, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Kami Lynetti, the Deputy City Attorney for Public Education. Tonight, I am presenting for your review the FY19 Cooperative Agreement for Legal Services between the School Board and the City Council for the provision of legal services to the School Board by the City Attorney's Office. The Cooperative Agreement has been in effect since FY96, and it sets forth the staffing and understanding of responsibilities regarding the provision of in-house legal services by a legal counsel to the School Board and the School Division. City Attorney's Office provides approximately 99% of all in-house legal services to the School Board and the school administration. In FY18, the only outside counsel hired for the School Board by the School Board expenses was for immigration matters, and that's simply because it's cheaper to do immigration matters by going to outside counsel than in-house. The School Board's insurance carriers pay for outside legal counsel for liability matters. That does not come as an additional legal. Does not come as an additional legal. Too late in the evening for me. The three in-house attorneys handle all matters related to student rights, which include special education, Section 504, student disciplines, student civil rights, custody, truancy matters. In addition, we handle all your employee rights, all contracts matters, policy and legal compliance. We view in excess of 600 contracts a year. We handle contract compliance. We handle debt collection, litigation, legislation, criminal prosecution, and various other administrative legal matters. The remaining 22 attorneys in the City Attorney's Office provide legal support, such as Debbie Bryan here earlier tonight, particularly matters having to do with property acquisition and sales, finance, debt collection, certain litigation matters, which are outside the expertise of the city attorneys that are signed to the School Board. The Cooperative Agreement estimates that we will provide in-house hours of 5,775 legal hours per year. In FY17, we provided 6,055 legal services hours. We have not finished the FY18 year. We've already exceeded 6,100 hours. We estimate several hundred more hours will come in before the end of the year. All our final figures for FY18 will not be in until later in August. Through the Cooperative Agreement, the City Attorney provides you with 3.5 full-time attorneys. You have one, three attorneys full-time here at the School Board. We draw off the other side of the office. You have the 22 attorneys at approximately half an attorney level. You have one full-time paralegal, and for FY19, we are requesting one full-time office assistant. I mentioned two years ago, when we brought on the third attorney, that we would probably need an office assistant due to the increase of work that is necessary at this point. We're only asking for an entry-level office assistant to assist that. The intent with that would be that the paralegal would then be freed up to do more paralegal work for us, to assist us in with the amount of litigation we've seen in the last two years. We find that to be necessary. The cost for the legal service agreement for FY19 will be $612,793.85. That cost includes salary, benefits, bar association dues, and certain administrative costs. The estimated hourly rate, based on that particular amount for FY19, is approximately $106 per hour. Salary rate is considerably lower than you would find for an average outside private counsel, but an associate attorney approximately bills in about $150 an hour. That would be a low-level attorney on there. The hourly rate for an experienced Virginia private practice attorney who handles special education or other public education matters ranges between $275 to $500. So you're receiving all of our work at approximately $100 an hour. We believe that the Cooperative Agreement provides cost-effective legal services for attorneys, and our attorneys are recognized as experts in the public education field, as well as municipal law field, and we provide what we believe to be a very cost-effective service for you. It remains the City Attorney's Office's privilege to serve the School Board, and we look forward to another productive year, and I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have about the Cooperative Agreement.
Do we have any questions or comments? Smalnack?
For the viewing public, could you please say again how many hours you have logged?
Six thousand. As of last week, and our attorneys are not required till the end of the month to have all their hours in, we know that was billed in with 6,100 hours, and I expect several hundred more hours will come in on there. We're averaging for the three attorneys that are in full house, and here are approximately 2,000 hours as each on there, and the rest comes from the other side of the office.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Lynetti. Do we have any standing committee reports this evening? Mr. Edwards.
I have two reports. One, as the Audit Committee met yesterday, our final meeting of the fiscal year. We reviewed, and two reports that have been uploaded on SharePoint, if anybody wants to review those. One was an audit of the budget transfer process, and the other was on our food service operations. So they're there if our colleagues want to review them. The other thing that we were presented and reviewed and approved was the proposed audit work plan for next year, which is included in the Internal Audit Annual Report, which is also filed on the SharePoint. Gives a summary of all of the audits conducted and completed during the year by the Internal Audit Office, and those are, again, there for your review. The other report is on the Achievable Dreams Ad Hoc Committee that was established about a month ago. We have met twice in the last three weeks and have expanded the membership to include two representatives of the CAC community, as well as, we will invite a City Council rep, as well as a member of the Virginia Beach Achievable Dreams Board to round out our committee. And the committee will be prepared to provide a very preliminary input to the board retreat in July to provide, you know, a brief update and perhaps some discussion at the retreat.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Do we have any other standing committee reports? Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I attended the CSEP meeting, and we finalized the budget, and we also were presented the five-year strategic plan. And if you go on CSEP's website, they actually have a three- or four-minute video that kind of condenses the five-year plan, so please go on there and watch it. And then also, the more detailed version, you can also download and read online as well. And then also, I attended the Green Run Collegiate Monthly Meeting, and they've got a lot of new stuff, new exciting stuff that they're going to implement in the fall. One is going to be new internships for their seniors after all the testing is done and before graduation. You know that time that sometimes we feel like they're not being given, how can I put this?
Meaningful.
Yeah, yeah, they're not engaged, because they've already taken all their tests, and it's hard for the teachers to get them engaged. And so this is the time that they're going to do internships throughout the community, and they're going to get each student an internship. So I think that is just a brilliant idea and something that maybe the other high schools can copy. And then also, they're going to do something in the mornings, every morning, kind of a little similar, that I think, to Achievable Dreams, how every morning they come together for community and everything. They're going to, they're working on that at Green Run Collegiate as well. And then, of course, we just had the graduation, and they, just Green Run Collegiate, they were offered, the seniors were offered $4.5 million, which is about $70,000 per graduate. So that was outstanding for them. So very good report. Excited for the fall.
Thank you. Do we have any others? Mrs. Riggs.
Yes, in the Sister Cities Report, I just wanted to let you know that the group of people that are going to Wollenburg, Germany, I don't say it right. Oh, no. I'm blinking. They're going, they're in Germany. We have a group, a new school, that is involved with that, next Cox High School, and the principal, Michael Kelly, is going with an assistant that's going with him. So he's very excited about that. So I'll give you all a report on that when they return. We have added a couple of other important people to the committee. One is our past governor, Governor McDonald, will be on our committee. And I am trying to think of the other one, but anyway, so there are two more people that are on there, but I did want to mention that. So I will let you know how the trip to Germany went.
Thank you. Any others?
Thank you. This is not a committee report, but I'd just like to take a moment to thank Mr. McGee for his committee that works so diligently at all the graduations. I attended all 15, 14 graduation, and it was ran exceptionally well seamlessly. The people that work in the background don't normally get any kind of attribute or honors, but I'd just like to say that Mr. McGee and his team worked really hard, and I sat and watched Superintendent Aaron Spence shake over.
Over 5,000.
5,000 students' hands at all of the graduations. That's not included the ones that were not announced. But I just like to give tribute to those ones that work in the background and making things run so seamlessly.
Thank you, Mrs. Felton. Any others? All right. That concludes our formal meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on non-agenda items?
No, ma'am.
Okay.